Roll call.
Greg Sapp?
Here.
Ed Singleton?
Here.
Les Newman?
Here.
Linda Bedwell?
Here.
Tony Richards is not present.
In the packet you received, you should have two sets of minutes for approval tonight. One is for the special meeting for the budget hearing held at 5:30 on September the 8th. And the other minutes are for the regular meeting, scheduled meeting for September the 8th.
I make a motion we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Les Newman?
Yes.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Next item on the list is approval of claims that have been properly signed.
I make that motion we approve the claims that are properly signed.
Second.
Motion's been made second to approve the claims properly assigned. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Les Newman?
Yes.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Okay, also need to approve the payroll allowance docket.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made second to approve the payroll allowance docket. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Les Newman?
Yes.
Linda Bedwell? Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the fund report.
I make a motion approve the fund report.
I'll second.
Motion's been made second to approve the fund report. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Les Newman?
Yes.
On the agenda, the next item is appropriations.
I make a motion we approve the appropriations.
Second.
Motion's been made second to approve appropriations. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Les Newman?
Yes.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Under new business in your packet, is not in your packet, but is the appointment of Ann Wright-Ganey to the Linton Library Board. She has been approached by them and has agreed to serve and to be the city's appointee to that position.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion's been made second to approve Ann Wright-Ganey to the Linton Library Board. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Les Newman?
Yes.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
John, can I also add under new business, the appointment for redevelopment, the Linton redevelopment court since Greg Sapp has resigned. I'd like to nominate Ron Lehman. I've talked with him about it.
Is that a council appointee or a mayor?
It's council.
Have to be approved as an addition to the agenda.
Okay, can I approve that, add addition to the agenda?
You have to make a motion.
Can I make a motion, we add that?
I need a second.
I'll second.
A motion's been made second to update the agenda to add the appointment of the redevelopment commission. Ron Lehman?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Just as I'm an outgoing member of the redevelopment commission, I'll be abstaining from the vote.
You need to have two votes here. You need to have a vote to add the item to the agenda, and then you need to have a vote on the item.
Well, this is the motion to add the item to the agenda.
I was just making, yeah, I was just making sure that was clear.
Yeah, this is just to add it to the agenda, so. So no further discussion? Call for vote to add this to the agenda.
Les Newman?
Yes.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Greg is abstaining.
Although he has to add to the agenda, but now it's not an actual form.
And Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Okay, add it to the agenda, to bottom of the agenda. In your packet is a Commonwealth Engineering Water Improvement Project. To develop and complete a preliminary engineering report, which is required for almost all available grants through the state.
I make a motion we approve Commonwealth Engineering 2025 Water Improvement Project.
I'll second.
Motion's been made second to approve the Commonwealth Engineering 2025 Water Improvement Project. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Les Newman?
Yes.
In your packet should be a Resolution 2025-04 Transfer of General Funds to Pool. Amount is $15,000 transferring from the general fund to cover the cost, to cover, to cover the cost of the pool. Season.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion been made second to approve Resolution 2025 Transfer of General Funds to the Pool. Any discussion?
I'd just like to add that is just to close out the pool season for this year. It has nothing to do with the group that's raising the funds for the Ann Reischer revitalization program.
How did the baby pool hold up in spring, the baby pool?
It had some leakage to it at the pool. I don't know how bad it was, but.
We managed. Yeah. I think we're gonna plan on resealing it again. I'd say probably the next spring. Put some more magic paint on it.
They were determined where the leak is coming from, or is what?
I think it's around the skimmer. Try to get some mortar around there and get it fixed.
Any other discussion?
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Les Newman?
Yes.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
In your packet was Resolution 2025-05 dealing with the interface and sending contracts for the mayor with the indot organization. This became an item during the application of community crossings that had to, one of the things that they requested, wasn't required for the application, but they requested was this resolution be approved in City Council.
I approve Resolution 2025-05.
I'll second.
Motion's been made second to approve Resolution 2025-05 Agreement for Indot Contracts. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Les Newman?
Yes.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
So in your packet is Resolution 2025-06, which is the sale of the property on F Street, the city-owned property. That was approved back in April, same?
April, yeah, I think so. Title company just needs a written resolution. There also was a, there was a brief amendment to comply with the statute and an assignment of the purchase agreement from the LLC to the owner of the LLC. Just cleaning that all up with a resolution. I think that's gonna close this week.
Make a motion we adopt Resolution 2025-06.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made second to, and Resolution 2025-06, the property sale. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Les Newman?
Yes.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Also in your packet was a recent middle of ordinance 2025-04 dealing with public information request. This was pulled last month because of an incomplete sentence.
It was, it was. And actually, it was already corrected, just the wrong thing went out to you guys. So it had been brought to my attention before. It was corrected. So you just now have the updated version.
And this policy is pretty much what's followed throughout the state.
Yeah. I believe that, I worked at like six different cities that have it. We've gotta do something because we have so many records requests. You guys, it's just crazy. We've gotta start making sure that they are, you know. Some of this stuff is for businesses. Technically, if it's for business, for them to get more money and things, we don't have to fulfill all of it. Some of the big companies want utility customer. It's just crazy, the amount of requests we have. So this is to make sure they fill out the form before they want the request and they understand that we can charge them for this or we can deny it if they're trying to make money off of it. Make a motion that we adopt the ordinance 2025-04 Public Records Request Policies Establishing the Required Form.
I'll second.
Motion's been made second to approve ordinance 2025-04 Public Records Request. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Les Newman?
Yes.
Okay, plus in your packet is ordinance 2025-09 dealing with pilot, which stands for payment in lieu of taxes. It is the amount that will be transferred from the utility side to the civic side because they will not allow property taxes. So this is in replacement of that called pilot.
We have a formal one. This one is adding a couple of utilities to it that was not on the former ordinance for the payment in lieu of taxes. I don't remember off the top. Sam, do you remember what two were added?
Stormwater and the other one.
Sanitation.
Sanitation, trash, yep.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion been made second to approve ordinance 2025-09 dealing with payment in lieu of taxes. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Les Newman?
Yes.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Also in your packet was ordinance 2025-10 Capital Asset Policy.
I make a motion we accept the 2025-10 Capital Asset Policy.
Second.
Motion's been made second to accept the ordinance, to approve the ordinance 2025-10 Capital Asset Policy.
And that, oh.
Any discussion?
And that is retroactive, back to January 4, 2025.
It is. Reasoning for that is we have to report to the state the entire year for 2025 and 2026. And we don't want to report the whole year different ways. We want it to all be the same way.
Wanna make a motion? You did, didn't you?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Call for vote. Sorry.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Les Newman?
Yes.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Last ordinance on the list is ordinance 2025-11, which is the salary ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made second to approve the salary ordinance. Any discussion?
We decided, or we talked about it at the hearing, that it's a 3% across the board raise except for is the fire. I mean, the fires, you guys haven't negotiated, haven't signed the contract, right?
Apparently, it approved today.
Okay.
So yes.
Any discussion? Did somebody make a motion? I lost that.
Yep. Motion and second.
It's been a long day. Call for vote.
Les Newman?
Yes.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
And Ed Singleton?
Yes.
And the last item added to the agenda is the appointment of Ron Lehman to the Redevelopment Commission. This is for a three-year term.
To fill out, what, Greg's?
To fill out the rest of Greg's.
Yes.
To complete the rest of Greg Sapp's term.
All right, motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made second to approve Ron Lehman to Redevelopment Commission to finish out Greg Sapp's term. Any discussion?
Will that make us, are we good now or are we still short? Okay. I'm, okay.
Call for vote.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
Greg Sapp is abstaining. Ed Singleton?
Yes.
And Les Newman?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is department head reporting.
Paul Clark, Land Police Department. See, I have our calls into our dispatch center. Our dispatches was 649 for the month of September, generating 311 police investigations and responses, and we had 55 traffic stops. A couple of dates, we've done trick-or-treating. It's gonna be from 5:30 to 8:30 on Thursday, October 30th, and Friday, October 31st. And then Spook Fest is the 25th. I'm not sure they're, off the top of my head, but their trunk-or-treat and parade and all of that stuff is on the 25th.
And that's at the park?
That's at the park, correct. So that's all I have. I'll stay for any questions you guys might have, if you have any. All right, thank you.
John, could I ask to cut in and take care of our presentation? I think they're getting a little restless. If that's okay. Not a department head, but back on September 20th, the Linton Motocross had a fundraiser, or they had a practice session. They were able to raise another $2,000 for the pool. So that puts them at $5,500 that the Linton MX has raised. But we had a couple of my little friends that decided they wanted to raise money for the pool. They thought it was my pool, but I had to correct them. It's the big pool, the Linton pool. But we have Maya and Asher Quackenbush, and we have Emerson and Letty Cox. And they raised, could you, you guys tell me how much money you raised for the pool?
I think it was about eighty, eighty some money.
About eighty, I think it was about $80. They sold lemonade. And I just think Miranda Miller and Adam Quackenbush are Maya and Asher's mom and dad, and Maddie Collins and Brexton Cox are Letty and Emerson's parents. And I just think we need to give them a round of applause for all their effort and. Maya, if you'll come forward. Maya is, what grade did you say you were in? Preschool, and what do you do, Asher? Soccer, okay. If you guys will come forward. And Letty, do you do anything?
So I pick on my sister.
Pick on your sister, all right. And Emerson, what grade are you in? All right, here's your presents. If you know what these are, you know what they are. What do you think, Asher? That is their favorite popsicle.
Oh wow, you're strong.
Asher, Maya, Asher's got yours. And those are yours. And share them with your sisters. That's all we got, sis. Sorry. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. I think that they were getting restless.
See, you topped on there.
I told them they can sleep.
Speaking of dealing with the children, we've had a busy month at the fire station, or convention, dealing with children. We've had preschool classes there already. We've had some kindergarten classes. And this week, we have Head Start coming up there. So like I say, we've been very busy with all that. I'm happy to report that we have one fireman that'll be coming back to work on the 17th of this month. He's been off with a back injury. So that'll put us back at eight firemen. Also, we had 93 total calls for the month. Fifteen of those was fire calls, and 78 of those was EMS calls. That's about all I have to report unless you guys have any questions. Thank you very much.
Greg?
Did have one thing, Brent Silver, Linton Utilities, did have one thing to bring up with the lead and copper rule improvement regulations on the water service line. We will be sending out letters to all of those that are either unknown lead or galvanized required replacement should be coming out by the end of this month. So again, in the unknown letter, it will be a QR code. Anyone that doesn't know what the service line material is, give us a call, we'll try to help. If you do know, you can use that QR code or just notify us of what your service line material is. We still have an abundance of unknown service lines that we are going to have to find out what they are by latter part of 2027. That seems like a ways off, but it'll, it'll be here before we know it. So we're gonna try to stay on top of this the best we can. With that, I would take any questions if you have any.
Just, you stated, but just if someone has a question at all about it with their letter, just
Call.
Call the utility office and they'll get you some help.
Yep. Yes, I can talk with them. Thank you.
All right, public comment portion of the meeting. Public comment guidelines are printed on the, posted on the window, so we'll read them at certain time. So Harold Smith?
Good evening. I'd like to address the board on a couple issues. I was looking at the meeting minutes. I hadn't seen them on the website first since June for the public meeting minutes, if we could get those on there. And then it's my understanding, we had a fireman go to another position. And I don't know what your intent is, if you're gonna hire a new firefighter. But I feel very important, I pay a lot of money for insurance. And if we don't hire a new firefighter, there's a possibility, I have to get the regulations out. I've read them. They bring them with me, I only have two minutes now. But I don't want the rating, fire rating to go up, which would affect every homeowner's insurance. And I pay a lot for my business. So I would encourage the city council to hire that position quickly. Fire and police are very important in the community, and they do a great job. This could affect everybody in the community. And there's talk of pulling a rescue truck from the county, which is an ambulance from the county. If that happens, and there, an ambulance run is needed, and we pull that asset, it's my understanding that we would have to wait for an ambulance from Jasonville or Bloomfield. So I would ask the city council, when it comes to hiring, I think it's very important to have police and fire as a priority. And that's all I have.
So you had two things.
The county minutes, the meeting minutes.
Okay.
Is that three, I'm sorry.
All right. Any other comments, council?
I'd just like to address that if you, if you're a city employee or a person out in the community, you have any questions that you wanna talk with the council about? If you're an employee, you have a problem, you have more right, I mean, you have the right to come and talk to the council members. I just wanna know that no one will be retaliated against. It's our job. And believe me, I think everyone here likes to hear, you know, we don't like to hear if there's a problem, but we need to know because a lot of stuff we don't know. I mean, I don't know that any of us go around town telling everybody's business, but every employee of the city has a right to come to a council person and talk to them about issues. Don't let anybody tell you you can't because you can't. That's what we're voted in for. Thank you.
Something, John. The property down GE, who's in charge of that, the GE factory?
It was sold to Wagner on contract.
We're getting awful high down there. I didn't know if we could push them to do something about it or not.
I think they did one mowing, but it's since grown back up.
It's grown back up. Man, looks terrible.
I asked Ron about that before last meeting. He wasn't here, but I don't know if he addressed, I think it's Kenneth Wagner that owns it. I'm not sure if he addressed it or not, but it was brought to apply to property's attention.
I've got one more thing. Do we, I know, I think they used to, do we still give the, the show the Humane Society money?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I didn't know, I know, we've been trying to get some dogs taken out there. Got a problem in our neighborhood, and I know they're not taking any, and I can understand that they're cruel, but I don't know what we're gonna do with them. We got seven down there puppies, and the guy ain't taking care of them good, and he can't get rid of them. Something's gonna have to be done one of these days, they're getting big. And it, you know, I'd hate to see them euthanized, but I don't know what the answer is.
No, as far as the funding to the Humane Society, we, city didn't provide anything.
Okay, I thought they used to pay them so much for taking care of the dogs.
We do. We get a bill from them for how many animals are taken to them. I think what he's referring to, years ago, when I believe Chuck was, I think we gave five or six thousand a year. I could be wrong. For the Humane Society, and then we just took our animals out there. And now it's just, for every animal we take, we are charged.
Yes, and that's been that way since I've been here.
Yeah.
I've never heard that one.
Yeah, that, that's the way we used to do it, so.
Just thought I'd ask, 'cause I, I mean, we're gonna have a problem down there before long with them.
I knew they were getting close to full at one time, not too long ago.
Yeah, they, we, I've tried a couple times to talk to them, and they're not taking the pool, so. Okay. I didn't have any money.
Anything else? Does that motion adjourned?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made to adjourn. Any discussion? Call for vote.
Greg Sapp?
Yes.
Ed Singleton?
Yes.
Les Newman?
Yes.
Linda Bedwell?
Yes.
All right, thank you all for coming. All right. Thank you all for having me.